So I'd like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of November 2021. We are not expecting any remote attendance this evening, so we can move on to the first item of the agenda before approving the remainder of it. And that first item is a public hearing for truth and taxation. And the Board of Park Commissioners of the Urbana Park District, Champaign County, Illinois, now opens a public hearing today, November 9th, 2021, at approximately 7:03 PM. The hearing is being held at the Planning and Operations Facility at 1011 East Kerr Avenue in Urbana. The purpose of the hearing will be to receive public comments on the proposed tax levy as required by the truth and taxation law. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a statement during this public hearing regarding this proposed tax, property tax levy? And I see no indication of anyone in the public wishing to make a comment. I would ask our executive director, have you received any comments with regards to the Black Box?
I have not, either email or telephone calls.
The Black Box publishing this hearing ran in the paper on October 28th, according to all of the rules. It was in section A or section B of the regular part of the paper.
It was in section A.
Yeah, and it was a nice, bold box there.
Yep, no, it definitely ran, but there has not been a public response as far as it's okay. Well, seeing no one from the public wishing to make comment this evening, I will declare this hearing closed. And we will move on then to the question of accepting or amending our agenda for the evening. I'm not aware of any proposed changes. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
That's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? And given that we're all masked up, I'd prefer we go ahead and do roll call vote. We'll start one with Roger.
Aye.
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 Okay, that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. So that takes us on to more general public comment. And I still see no person from the public here to make comment. Has there been any indication electronically of somebody wanting to do that?
None.
All right.
I do have a comment about the staff introductions section. We've been testing out hybrid meetings using the snowball microphone, it's kind of over there.
Oh, that's the camera, sorry.
Oh, yeah, it's back there on the counter. Did that, did you do hybrid yesterday also with the foundation?
It worked just fine.
And I think it's been working okay. So one of Tim and I's ideas about moving forward with hybrid meetings is like, for example, staff introductions, we'd normally have our interns come and be introduced to the board and would we like, you know, just in the interest of keeping numbers down, to not have as many people in the building as far as like still being within the COVID pandemic, would we want to invite folks like that to a hybrid format that they could come and zoom with the board members? What are your thoughts on that? Because we have at least one intern that hasn't been introduced, we were kind of holding on.
The other advantage too is certainly an efficiency on their end, so I'm assuming a staff person wouldn't feel slighted, not, you know, they've tried to do that.
I mean, it's a, it's a shame not actually to see the person right here when they're being introduced, but it certainly is safer, all things considered, I suppose, to do it in a zoom fashion.
Staff tried to think of as many ways we could help that situation and still be in person, and so that was one easily arranged.
And how do we as a board see the person who's zooming in?
Projected on the screen.
So we, so we have to turn around, we have to get arranged so we can see there, yeah.
I didn't know if there's a way we could put, bring in another TV monitor, hook it up so that they'd be able to see.
How was it, were they up here yesterday?
They were, but, you know, it worked fine for our looser group, you know, as a foundation.
The seating isn't all that hard.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we do that for other parts of presentations, it's just, just thinking about it, yeah.
Could we give them a choice if there was someone who really wanted to come and made us in person?
Well, I think that was one of Kelsey's concerns too. She was kind of thinking, you know, if we're going to be inviting people to participate via Zoom, that we might need to like advertise the Zoom as a way that you could watch the meeting live. I mean, I know we record it, so we were still thinking about that, because I mean...
That was going to be my question, is this a precedent that we set that for some reason we, I mean, I absolutely for efficiency and, I mean, asking interns to come in, which are already non-paid basically, right, to come to a board meeting. I'm totally fine with it, yeah, I didn't know about the other implications on other folks or other things.
We're still looking into it.
Okay.
We can move on, but I just wanted to...
Yeah.
We have options.
Yeah. Thanks.
Moving right along then, the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee report. We had some minutes in our board packet, was there anything anybody wanted to add or ask about that?
It was great to see the new facility that CUSR has, and, I mean, as usual, everybody's just blown away by the amount of work those folks do. It's just, it's just pretty stunning. And it was a pretty full house.
We had everyone in attendance, I think they were very interested to come and see it and hear, learn about what's going on, so we're very pleased. We had full attendance, full tour of the facility, and excellent program and discussion.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, it's time to move on to our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda this evening, our approval of three, minutes of three meetings, October 5th study session, the October 12th regular board meeting, and the October 19th special board meeting. A receipt of the monthly departmental reports from administration, planning and operations, and recreation, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. So it is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there any commissioner wishing to do that? I see no indication of that. So is there a commissioner prepared to make a motion that we approve the action items on this consent agenda in an omnibus fashion?
So moved.
Seconded.
That's moved and seconded, and under the rules of the consent agenda, at this point there is to be no further discussion. So we will hold a call, a roll call vote, starting this time at the, at the left with Cedric.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting in the affirmative. We can move on now to our reports.
I think financial's up first.
Alrighty. Sorry. Thank you for having me here. I'm going to present to you the financial results for the Urbana Park District through October 31st, 2021. The first report I'll discuss is called the Revenue and Expenditure Report. This report shows the receipts and expenditures for the 12-month, sorry, for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited, unaudited results for the six months ending on October 31st. The first page of this report is what we call sum one, it is basically the operations of the park district, it does not include the capital improvements fund. The revenues for this period were $8,755,000, which is an increase of $1,286,000 since September. 7.4 million of our total revenues are property taxes. We received our fifth property tax distribution for levy year 2020 on October 4th, which is 96% of our property taxes with the final payment expected in November. Expenditures for this period were $4,117,000, which is a change of $584,000 since September. We have a surplus after six months, which means there's an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $4,486,000. Moving on to the second page, this is what we call sum two, and this is separating out just the capital improvements fund. Revenues for this six-month period were $172,000, and the negative interest you see on the year-to-date balance column is interest accruals for CDs for interest that was earned and recognized in fiscal year '21, but the cash will be received in fiscal year '22, at which point the negative balance will clear. Expenditures for this period were $801,000. Expenditures exceed revenues, and this leaves a net decrease in fund balance for the capital improvements fund of $629,000. Still have a long way to go though, to spend that bond money. So there's still 6.6 million left at this point. And finally, the sum three is all funds District Y, this is the first two pages added together, and the net ending fund balance for the entire district is $21,104,000. So if the district were to end today, that is the amount of fund balance that we have available in the district. Following that, but we are a forever district, so it's not a thing. Following that are the individual summary reports for the main working funds, general, recreation, museum, and indoor pool. So happy to entertain any questions you may have about the revenue and expenditure report before I move on.
Just, just one question, Katie, and probably those who've been on longer know this, but we're close to 96% on property tax, how does that usually resolve itself by the end of, by that last payment?
Sure. We usually get between 97 to 100, you know, 99.9% of our property taxes, depending on the year. So typically that final payment's fairly small, and it'll pretty much finish us out, and that'll be it. Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, great. Any other questions? There's a new law too, we were just talking about it, that's going to allow, the reason that we don't get exactly 100% is usually for differences between the property tax bills went out, but people had already requested reductions for assessed values and things. And so they may have a reduction in their property tax bill, or they may have an exemption approved, that then they don't have to pay the bill at all. And so those variations are why we don't, or non-payment too is another reason. So if somebody just doesn't pay their bill. So there's a variety of reasons why we might not receive exactly 100%, but now there's a new law that just got passed that says that you can levy the following year to, or that, I think you don't even have to levy for it, I think it's automatic.
Oh, really?
That you'll get the money that you lost the prior year from non-payment and that difference for bills that have been retracted in the following year.
So it's kind of like Carl, but on a much smaller scale.
Yes, I said, man, which we had that law in 2014, we would have gotten $900,000 back. So...
Yes.
Yeah.
That was a little too late.
I think that actually might be part of the reason for that law, actually. I don't know if like Carl specifically went into it, but it's to protect for situations like that. So, where a large taxpayer has been removed from the tax rolls and it affects the district. So, anyway, so that's exciting. We're still learning a little bit more about how that'll actually be implemented, but I was glad to hear that they passed it.
Some relief.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so moving on to the treasurer's report. The treasurer's report is the report of the amount of cash that the district has on one day, October 31st, 2021. All 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested. Eventually, there will be a 25th fund after last month when you approve the Brown Fund, but I haven't added it since we don't have the money yet, so I was going to add it whenever that money comes in.
I was wondering about that.
So there, there will be 25 funds, but since we haven't opened it, we haven't made a decision about where we're opening the investment account yet, I haven't added it. But eventually, that will be a 25th fund, so I just wanted to explain why that hasn't gone in yet. But we have a grand total of funds for the district for the end of October of $18,966,605.32.
Katie, is there, is there any rhyme or reason for how the funds are numbered?
Actually, yeah, because when we implemented BSNA, I had the opportunity to redo them all. So they used to be in a different order, but I kind of ordered them in a way that made sense to me. So our property tax funded funds come first. So funds 01 to 32 are all property tax funds, except for the indoor pool.
Yeah.
But I plugged the indoor pool in there because they're, those are our main four operating funds, so I wanted them at the very front. And then beyond that are kind of like funds that are like driven by other sources of revenue, so like the replacement tax and things, and then the capital funds are at the end. And payroll and interim just are actually part of the general fund, and they're just working funds, so.
Good, thanks.
Yeah, so there is a little bit of a rhyme or reason, it's hard to plug them all in there, but...
But you know, I mean, there's, you get to decide, it's not...
Yeah, I did decide, yeah. I put a little thought into it, but not too, I mean, it's just, they all exist, as long as they exist, it doesn't really matter what number they are, but makes it a little bit easier for grabbing things for reports and things like that, that you can just say, I just need those four working funds, or, and not have to go through a whole list, so. Okay, cool. Good question. Thanks. All right, page two of the treasurer's report lists amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts, so of the $18,967,000 on hand, $17,377 is out in investments. This is up quite a bit from about a million dollars from last month, because I worked with Park Pool, Iptolaf, to invest about $992,000 in, in four one-year CDs at an interest rate of .1% net, a net rate of .1%.
Whoopie.
But that's a lot better than the .02% we were getting in the money market account. So I haven't seen any improvement in interest rates, and I, from what I've been reading about mark, you know, the economic outlook and the market, it's not going up anytime soon, there's just so much cash in the market right now, so that's driving interest rates down. So I just thought, you know what, I've been asking them several times, like, hey, if you see any good rates out there, every once in a while a bank will come out that wants cash and they'll, they'll have a good rate. So they put together this portfolio of these four CDs for me, and I said, okay, well, let's go for it. I, I'm sick of making pennies, so we might as well earn $1,000 in a, in a year.
Now we can make nickels, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the outlook for these four CDs, the, the, we're going to get a gross amount of like $1,400 at the end, it was just like terrible.
Yeah, but better than nothing.
Well, yeah, but for a million dollars, it's just, oh, sad. It's sad, but, I mean, yeah, it is better than what we would have gotten, a couple hundred or whatever, so. But to go from, you know, making 60,000 to 80,000 a year plus in interest to nothing is hard for me to watch.
Then you have to, then you have to pay more for the money you borrow, so it's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's one way or another.
True, true, yeah. So we do benefit on the other side when we're doing our geo-bonds next month, so, you're right. Anyway, so I just want to let you know of that update, that I have invested in some more CDs, and I may do that with Commerce as well. Most of our money with Commerce is not in the CDs right now, we've, we used to at one time have like seven or eight CDs invested in the latter, and right now we're down to three. So I need to probably, I was kind of waiting, like, okay, are the interest rates going to go up? Are they going to go up? And then they just keep, they're pretty much just plateaued. For a while, they were down, 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 but now they're just kind of, eh. So I'll probably just go ahead and reinvest and just keep them fairly short-term so that I can continue to reinvest if rates go up, so. It's my main strategy there. The next section at the bottom of the page lists inter-fund loans, and there were no changes to any inter-fund loans this period. And the final section on page three lists disbursements for the month of October. Vendor payments on, the totals on this page match the paid accounts payable that you approved on the consent agenda. Total disbursements of funds for October were $753,000, and the largest outflow was in the liability fund, which included in that amount our annual renewal of our general liability insurance policy that we carry with iParks. So that renews every October, and that payment was made. Everything else is pretty standard bills. And with that, I present the treasurer's report to you for approval.
I will accept the treasurer's report for audit.
Seconded.
That's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 Okay, that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting in the affirmative.
All right. Lastly, I'll just cover the areas in the capital budgets where there were activity this period. So each of, any account that had any activity in it are highlighted with a little asterisk symbol. On the first page, in the 20, in the Series 2019A Bonds Budget, costs were paid towards the CLP road system design. On the next page, in the 2021 Capital Budget, revenues were received for tributes, and expenditures occurred on tributes, construction crew projects, and on design services for the roof repairs at the Phillips Rec Center. In the 2020 Capital Budget, probably three-quarters of the way down the page, there was activity on expenditures towards a half-ton pickup truck that was delivered, which the board previously voted to purchase in February 2021. And in the Crystal Lake section, on water quality improvements. There was no activity in the 2029 Capital Budget, sorry, 2019 Capital Budget, we're not there yet, whoa.
Time travel.
2019 Capital Budget, there was no activity. In the 2018 Capital Budget, there was one item of activity, which was on expenditures for, from the ADA capital account for UPD on the ADA audit that we've begun. And there was also no activity in the 2017 Capital Budget. So with that, Derek and Andy have some updates for you on capital projects.
Okay, I can start with our upcoming ITEP project for Broadway Avenue. Our RFQ for engineering services was advertised and distributed in October. We received our submissions on November 1st. Tim, Derek, and I will be conducting interviews tomorrow and Friday on our shortlisted three firms that we have out of that pool. We're utilizing our QBS process for federally funded projects, and then after our interviews, we'll do our independent evaluations again to have our final firm to then move forward to developing a contract, and then getting ultimate approval from iDOT. And so, once we have that approval and the paperwork ready from iDOT, we'll take it to the board for the final action, which could be as soon as December. A lot of it's going to be dependent on how quick iDOT can turn things around on their end, so it may be January or even February, until we can get our engineering firm under agreement. And then, just as a reminder, the overall schedule on the project, so we'll look, have our engineer onboard here in the next couple months. We'll look to do a bid within the iDOT bid letting windows next winter, so it could be towards the end of next year or early 2023. And then we aim to have construction start late spring, early summer of 2023. With our health and wellness facility, since our last board meeting, we received our final park grant agreement, and have since executed our contract with Farnsworth for architectural services. Yesterday, we actually held a kickoff meeting with Farnsworth to begin developing the schematic design. And as you may recall in previous updates, one of our first steps, once we had our park agreement in place, was to begin developing an RFQ for construction manager services. And so we've done that, as of last Friday, we began advertising for it, and it's currently open for submissions right now. And then we are scheduled to receive final submissions by the end of this month, I believe November 29th. And then we'll be doing our evaluation with Farnsworth on, as part of our team as well. And then we'll be conducting interviews and selecting a firm probably mid-December, and then hope to have an agreement in front of the board at the January board meeting to get a construction manager as part of our team. Phillips Roofing, we had the contractor at Phillips towards the end of last week, they completed the shingle replacement portion, the TPO material, which is for that flat roofing to small areas, is kind of a victim of supply chain issues. So we don't have a good date at this point of when the contractor will be able to come back and do that replacement, but we've been cautioned it may be months away, looking towards maybe even towards the end of next year.
Hmm.
The contractor does also need to complete the gutters and downspouts, and so that will, they'll probably be back on site in the next week to do that as well.
How does this work when they can't complete the entirety of the contract in a timely manner? Do we end up paying pro rata or something to them, or do they just sort of eat it, eat it until they can actually complete the, the project?
I believe they'll have their order in and price locked in, so we won't have any, we won't see any changes, we'll just see a change on when they can actually get them to be delivered.
But do they get a nickel from us before they actually complete it?
We'll, we'll pay for the asphalt shingle portion.
Okay, so that was itemized out enough that...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's what the insurance is covering, the flat membrane roof is not coming through insurance, so it wasn't damaged, part of the hill.
I do have some pictures here, I actually have Blair and Phillips for our meeting tonight. So on Blair, kind of within the last month, they've been finishing up some of the concrete areas, oops, sorry, doing some backfilling and seeding, the corner ramp areas, they do have a few more small concrete areas they need to do, and it'll probably be done here in the next week. This is one of those concrete areas that was completed since our last meeting, this is around that seating area, elevated seating area for the tennis court, this is one of those concrete areas they still need to finish up, so there's this, there's a small bike pad that's kind of in this area down here, and then the construction entrance off of Pennsylvania, they still need to pour. And then the foundation for the Sutu wall, and so that should be, all be concrete-wise done here in the next week or so. The Sutu wall, I do have an update on the delivery for that, we were originally told end of October, early November, now we're being told early December. We'll, I'll let you know next meeting if that actually comes to fruition. And then this is that similar, that same area there by the seating area, this is before they were installing the new water fountain that has a bottle filler as well, that actually was finished with the installation yesterday morning. And then kind of exciting, I think, is the new block seating. And so these are concrete blocks that are colored and have kind of a, looks like a texture to them as well. But they, you can see the color kind of works well with our stamped and colored concrete, and as well as the, the blues that we have elsewhere in the park, or will have with the challenge course and the playground. And these are actually made by the same company that did the bags at Crystal Lake Park and the picnic tables as well, out of DeKalb, Sycamore.
It isn't going to encourage anybody to sit long.
Right.
Looks like skate park features.
Yeah, we hope.
Here's kind of another angle from that.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Where you can kind of see how they look with the different concrete treatments there as well. And then in the background, Keith's progress on the playground, and then I kind of got a little closer image, so you can see how much he's completed here in the last couple weeks.
I've forgotten, are there any shade structures beside the trees around that seating area, or is that just baking the sun there?
Sun, there's no, there's no shade structure itself.
There are...
And trees are planted.
Yeah, some, some accessible benches, that'll be going in as well.
Oh, good.
So the, the blocks were kind of, intended to be more informal seating for some of our kind of tweener, you know, teenage, young adult group that, that we know are close by.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, I just, I was thinking of my own posterior on that hard surface. I'm glad they're there.
And then on...
Oh, that's...
Ah, a numbum.
Phillips, I think this is from the first day they were out there, starting to get stuff removed from the site, shingles and stuff, and then prepping off one of the wings here for the new shingles. And then I tried to get some pictures where the sun was on the shingles a little bit better, these are the new shingles, so you can kind of see the color we have selected there, and the look. And then a different angle of the front, and it's kind of hard to see on the screen.
Oh, that's the new sculpture, yeah.
Yeah, well, not new, but...
No, but new to here.
New to Phillips, yeah.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah, I walked by the other night, it looks awesome.
It looks really empty at Meadowbrook right now, but it'll change, just a sign.
Okay, well, that's all I had, unless there's some questions, I'm happy to answer on anything else.
I will, you know, we'll note that in the board report, I wrote up a little bit about the construction manager options. The construction manager at risk is the option that Farnsworth is encouraging us to consider. Tomorrow morning, we're going to be reviewing that with Matt Dearing. It was completely coincidental, but at a legal symposium this year, there was a presentation by a legal firm on different construction methods, and the construction manager at risk was reported to be on the increase, currently used in about 25% of projects and increasing. And we found a number of park districts that have used it recently on large projects like our own. Farnsworth feels like in this age of COVID, it's a really well-suited project delivery method because it affords us some certainty about our maximum price, but also flexibility as we move into design and construction. And so, we'll find out more about it tomorrow as we meet with Matt Dearing and then share it with you all with our final recommendation.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
I did have one question. I noticed that there was 20,000 out of the 2020 capital budget on water, water quality improvements. I wondered what that covered.
20,000 in the last period?
Yeah, 20,562.
Yep.
In the 2020.
We might have had, that might have been our total alum treatments for the lake for the year. The last period might have just been the five, like 5,000 or so.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, it was 17,000 last fiscal year and 20,000 from May through October of this fiscal year.
I thought it was just in the last.
Yeah, so that was all of the alum and the three days that they did herbicide and manual removal of algae as well.
It looks better.
It has looked a lot better, yeah.
So, are you happy with the, with the results of the alum, or is it too early to tell yet?
I think it's still probably too early to fully tell. I think this year, it's been a little bit better than the past five years probably, but there's certainly days or weeks that it doesn't look good, and it's got full coverage.
There's been a lot of disturbance there, too.
It's looked dreadful a lot of the time.
Not to put too fine a point on it.
Well...
Well, but you're, I mean, you're right, it did.
It did. So, Andy and I met with a group of students, was it last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're, they've got a program called Cree Algae, and one of the things that they, they have a lab they're working with is converting algae to biodegradable plastic. And we, very encouraging for them to pursue it. It sounds like their tenure with this lab may be somewhat short-lived, and so we're hopeful that the lab manager will be interested in picking it up. We also talked with them a lot about the history of what we've been doing out there, and you all may recall that our environmental engineer in the project said that it's typical the first year after you do a big restoration project like this, where you do a lot of grading, you stir up a lot of sediments for you to have more algae. In our case, it's not actually algae, it's duckweed and watermeal, mostly watermeal, and that by year two, it quiets down. So, we're still hopeful. I mean, we have all sorts of treatments in place, you know, floating wetlands, the emergent wetlands, they're establishing the rock pool structures in the water feature. We've got stormwater cyclone devices that pull out sediment, improvements to the detention off of the car park parking lot. But if we still find that we have issues next year, it's probably not an ongoing source issue, more of a legacy issue. And the only silver bullet that I've heard of is extracting all the sediment. Fortunately, they've got new technologies. You don't have to drain the lake entirely. There are vector systems that can pull it out, but it comes with a pretty hefty price tag. So, we wanted to exhaust other possibilities and certainly address some of the incoming pollutants before we start to address any, any legacy pollutants.
I think staff is willing to recommend that next treatment, certainly if we don't see improvements, you know, obviously, all the work we've invested, it's not a surprise there could be 40 years of, you know, sediment in the bottom of that lake, so... But as Derek said, we've done a lot of other really great things. Let's see how it goes, and we certainly have other tools in the tool box.
Or just make it a feature.
We can call it Green Lake.
Well, it wouldn't be wrong.
So, any other questions? Let's move on to the executive director's report.
Sure, thank you. Starting out, I just want to say a general thanks to all of our volunteers that we get. I was volunteering at the, or working at the CUSR Cupcake 5K race, and just really impressed with the amount of volunteers. I got to talk to several, asked why they volunteer, what they do. The two I was stationed with, one works with the Champagne Park District quite a bit at the Virginia Theater, and certainly learned about our activities and wanted to dial in to what the park district in Urbana is doing. The other was a young girl, a woman I sent on to Corky already, and staff, just really hard worker, just loves volunteering. In fact, I told her about Rita Crossed America, and she's a student at Academy and High School, and had already sent me an email full with groups of people that she would want to bring and help volunteer. So, just great to hear that people care, they're willing to, you know, connect with us, and then as long as we're doing outreach and making sure we're connecting with people, I think we can continue to get good volunteers. So, again, it's just always encouraging.
So, you were recruiting, really?
Well, it was funny, because I thought, that's another reason to be there.
Sure, of course, yeah.
And they were just asking, I thought, oh, it's a golden opportunity to recruit some more volunteers for us.
That's great.
So, they both seemed very interested, and one followed up already, and the other said, I'm going to go check your website out, see what events you... I said, turkey trot's coming up. So, anyway, they're out there, and certainly volunteers love to volunteer, so we couldn't do what we do without their help. And that event was certainly a huge benefit to have a lot of volunteer help. Moving on, just wanted to call out the DEI report, a lot of exciting things in the report. In addition, we've had conversation with Dr. Wanda Ward. She's leading the call to action in the Community Compact End Racism in Champagne County. We're going to be putting together just a memo of resources that the Urbana Park District could provide in any of that work. So, what facilities we have, what staffing, in our case, Urbana would certainly be of interest. I think there's a lot of excitement about that. So, I'll be getting together Corky, and we'll be putting some notes together and send off to that group. I think we're probably at that stage where there'll be the university-led things, and then what can we get going in the community? So, it's very exciting and just fun to work, you know, at another level with others, and I think they're learning from us and really see us as a valued partner. So, I think it's a good fit. So, we'll continue to, to look at that, see what comes out of that.
Do you think there's going to be money that will come to us locally from the governors? Was it 250 bazillion dollars?
I certainly hope so. I certainly hope so. I think there's some soft dollars out there that certainly would, could be available for programming and things like that to actually get things, you know, done and moving.
And how, I mean, how does one latch on to that dough?
Well, a couple of different ways. One way, we're working with the, Corky's had a couple of meetings already on the People, Parks, and Power Grant Program through the Robert Woods Johnson Foundation. And so, there's an interest in us working, probably a focus in Urbana. So, there's grant programs like that. We hope there's other rollouts. I was talking to the mayor Friday at the ribbon-cutting event at the KRT, and I think they have access in their annual budgets that they could release to not-for-profits.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
That could work. So, we, we think there's going to probably be more, you know, resources that could be available.
Okay, so the city's on the lookout. It's not, we're not the only ones who are having to pay attention to where some of that money is.
We're working with all of our DEI partners, anybody that would have access to funds, we want to zero in and see how we can work together to maximize what they could get, what we have, and so forth. So, it's probably a good time to have things lined up and ready to go, because if the money comes, we want to be ready for it. Just a few new connections in the DEI area. I think we're working with Reverend Willie Comer. I think his big hope is indoor connections at the new health and wellness facility and get indoor midnight basketball rolling. Reverend Terrence Thomas, we want to continue working with on any nonviolent violence reduction programs. And a new connection, not new to organizationally, but the Don Moyers Boys and Girls Club. You know, we haven't had a big history working with them, and in, at least as deep as Champagne has. So, our outreach, first few calls, they're very excited and would love to see a connection in Urbana, so I look forward to that. For the UPDAC meeting that's coming up, Tracy Parsons will be joining us. UPDAC, if you remember, a few months ago, had asked to get an update on the community violence, what's going on, and so we thought, let's have Tracy come. We also have some reps from U of I from the Diversity Lab that'll be coming that did our study, first study. I think they're going to kind of do an introductory, you know, hello, and tell us what, what's going on, and then certainly our own efforts, which are pretty long and deep. So, we'll kind of see what time we have left in that meeting, but should be a good discussion. Let's see, I mentioned the CUSR Cupcake 5K was really a terrific day, just beautiful weather. I think we had about 375 participants, which was really good because the previous year, last year, we didn't have it, but the previous year, it was in that range. So, to be able to kind of get back up to those numbers was just terrific. Obviously, the great weather, I think we had a lot of onsite, you know, registrations that day, so grateful for that, but went really smooth, everyone had a great time. Appreciate the good work they do. As you know, Clark Lindsay Village is expanding. We've had discussions and onsite visits to see what's going on, and there's an aspect of landscape improvement. Derek and I will be meeting Friday with them to talk about what I would call the, the new entrance from Clark Lindsay into Meadowbrook Park. The other one was near Tango, now it's moving a little bit further north, and it'll be across what I call our key property, that's that little piece of land that juts into Clark Lindsay, and doesn't give us a nice clean edge. So, I think that'll probably be the access route, but we see a nice opportunity for some very high-quality landscape, would love to see some public art and, you know, part of that solution. So, talking with their staff, getting a high vision, committing to that are our next steps, so we'll see how that work progresses. I would predict good things. Got an update from Janet Sozby. She attended the last Age Friendly, the Center for Health Aging and Disability Group, had kind of some bad news with that group. I think COVID has been very unkind. Several of the participating agencies reported that they can't send staff any longer to serve on that board. The Shambana Grandparents website has now been shut down. There just wasn't enough, you know, traffic to keep that a viable option, so we feel badly about that. But nonetheless, the group's still committed. The ones that remain will keep working together, and I just really urge us to continue with that. It's super important, as you probably all know, senior adults, at least in the US, are the most discriminated group across the board. So, there's, with good reason, that we should be concerned about older adults in, in the country and in this county. So, I still predict good outcomes, but just a little disappointing when people can't participate. We understand why, they're short-staffed, and they can't do a lot of extra things. But fortunately, we have good staff that want to serve, and I think, you know, we'll still continue and see how far that, that goes. Kickbo Rail Trail, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the big bridge last Friday. I think there was a little bit of unsatisfied, satisfied folks. Basically, it was an iDOT event, because iDOT paid for the, most of the bridge, and a DNR event. So, that meant about 50 people, obviously due to COVID, was in a very select group. Many of our other locals that have been very, very active with that project were not invited. I think there were some bad feelings about that, but what I try to suggest is, why don't we plan for our own local event in the spring? We can do whatever we want to do and invite as many people. Probably the comparison was the big kickoff a couple of years ago in St. Joe, when we had, you know, a couple thousand people right downtown there, very exciting atmosphere. So, I think that was sort of the vision. It wasn't like that at all. It was the Secretary of Transportation and the DNR Director. I made very good use of my time, though. I had an excellent conversation with the new DNR Director, Colleen Callahan. Basically, did what I could to sell her on trails, how important Ozland is. She's very aware that it was almost swept, so we talked to good length about that, and, you know, why did governors do that? They've done it from both parties. You know, reminded her it's dedicated funding and that it's been a part of almost every major park developed in Urbana, so we can't look at a facility or trail without that. I think she really understands that, and I just further encouraged her, if you need any help with trails downstate or people that know about that, please call on us. We're ready, we're available. So, I think they got a very good impression of our area as far as the locals, you know, that were there and are committed to that. I think the DNR, sorry, the iDOT Director was very eloquent, talked about future grants, so I hope, and we hope to believe there'll be more, you know, transportation dollars in this new infrastructure, you know, that would relate to local trails. So, made the pitches, hoped they were receptive, I think they were. But nonetheless, we'll work on another event for our locals when it warms up here. It's a beautiful facility. If you haven't been over there, it's all open now. There's a small parking area just to the west of the bridge, or you could, there's other areas along that Route 150 corridor where you could pull off and probably find safe parking. Number of people rode their bikes over from Urbana, which I'm always impressed, they had to leave, I would have had to leave the day before to probably get there, but they rode all the way. So, it was a very exciting day, and although a small crowd, we certainly represented. I think you all received the information of the fundraiser that we're doing with Sleepy Creek. We don't have as many items, but I've heard we've raised, at least pledge-wise, well over 1,000, and it keeps going up in the numbers. Now, our last...
I didn't...
I can send the links out. I thought, I thought I'd sent that.
Did you get something? I haven't seen anything.
I thought a few, a week ago or so, when it first came out, I forwarded it to the board, but I'll, I'll send it again. I almost sent it tonight, but I thought, I think I already did, so my bad, but it goes through the 18th...
Maybe just said it.
Of November, so there's plenty of time. And as you know, silent auctions, all the action happens at the end, you know, when the, when the prices are at their highest rate. But there's a lot of good items, some park district things in, in that mix, so pleased about that. This Friday, sorry, next Friday, we're, the Steering Committee will meet in Urbana. We're going to kind of tour our terminus, a few sites in Urbana, so as people come from Danville this way, they'll be able to see and visualize what we have in store and what we have planned at Weaver Park, so excited about that. And excellent Friends Group meeting, and maybe one of our best last week, another good turnout at Homer Lake, a lot of committed people. We got pretty far through the process, moving into, you know, draft bylaws, and I think that group's going to be up and running. So, Diane Banta is our facilitator. She's a retired National Park Service Planner. She's probably drawing her work down, and I think the goal was to, you know, volunteer to help our locals to get this group up and running, and then certainly she'll step off and let the group take on. So, we're real, real pleased about that. I think there'll be a lot of volunteer efforts coming out of that. Andy covered all the Blair stuff, but we did have a donor call last week with Corky, Derek and I, and Andy, working with a couple of potential donor families on some of the additional items at Blair Park, namely the pavilion and the tennis seating area, that little plaza. So, with any good luck and fortune, we'll get some interest in donor side of things and be able to add to that wonderful story at Blair Park.
Had this come through the, the, the foundation fundraising emails?
One half on the foundation effort, and then we have another group that's interested that Park District has been working with for...
Great.
Over a year, and we'll, we'll see how far that goes. Certainly, the capacity and interest seems to be there, so we'll, we'll hope for good things. We continue to provide information and meet and talk with them. Just a short mention on the leadership's efforts on the affiliate groups. As you may recall, Park District, as long as I think I've worked here, we've had a list of what we called affiliates, and they were, from my perspective, it was a way many, many years ago to justify groups that we could give free or reduce space, or use of buildings, or some opportunity in a park site. Generally, the old model was balanced on effort that they might do in a volunteer capacity that we could equalize in, in some sort of monetary equivalent of space, time, or place in a park. I think what leadership's recommending now is, so much has changed with that. There's so many more community groups. What we're basically saying, if we have invested staff working with a group, and the superintendent, who's the ultimate supervisor in, in those work groups, would approve a use, we want to be able to do that and not create lots of complicated equations and ways for, you know, what were intended for a Boy Scout or Girl Scout troop to get maybe a free space to meet in the nature center, an opportunity that we can leverage up and start working with a lot of different groups. We're also cognizant of, you know, fair and balanced equations, but we want to find a way that doesn't create a lot of barriers to saying no to people before we can get to yes. So, it's, let's go out and get as many groups that we can that are producing mutual benefits for the Park District, and let's sort of award those on that basis. So, we'll continue to look at that and review that. I believe we'll still have affiliates listed, but it won't be sort of that old antiquated equation base to, to, you know, say yes if a group can meet. There's so many groups that we work with now just in the DEI area that may not be able to provide funds or necessarily organize and provide equivalent volunteer outreach, but we still want to offer something or say yes, or, or be a part of their event. or, or be a part of their event. So it's really a way, we're looking at it as, how do we extend what we do working with other groups? So I think that's a refreshing approach, I think it solved a lot of problems, and I think it'll make more and deeper connections for the Park District.
How would this work, say, um, the Archers is the one that comes to-
Now, they have a lease arrangement with that-
Okay, so that's a lease-
So that's a little bit different, but it's probably like, I know all of us have our groups, um, we could all come up with-
I can give a good example.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, the Dream House, about two weeks ago, they did a, their-
These are Backpack people?
Dream House.
Dream House, Tracy Days, it's D R E.
It was the Backpack, the Backpack?
Yeah, yeah, they were part of that as well.
Okay, alright.
Um, they've also done some volunteer trash pickup and stuff this summer with their, their kids that come to them.
Mm-hmm.
It's a small version, I guess, of like Don Moyer's Boys and Girls Club.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so this couple of weeks ago, um, because we've been partnering with them, they were looking for a space to have, um, their annual silent auction playday type event. And so we did that at Phillips.
Mm-hmm.
And so the way that works, it, it, very similar to an affiliate, if we have staff there, then they don't need to pay for staff costs, but if we have to have staff there, then we charge them the staff cost and not so much our building rental.
Yep, yep.
And it's because we're a partner with them, and we have lots of new types of partnerships where we want to have that ability to, I mean, I think we have that ability now, but the problem in a lot of these cases is the phone call is going to our front desk staff.
Yep.
And so we need to create a process, which we're working on, that, okay, you can fill out this form.
Mm-hmm.
And then if it's a park, then Derek would sign off on it, if, if it's a facility-
Right.
Then I would hear about it and sign off on it. A lot of times before, I didn't, I never heard about them, so, you know, there was a, a, lack of better term, a black and white reason, if you can get that space or you can't.
Mm-hmm.
So this way, it's more, what's our relationship, what are we doing with that group and, and that kind of stuff? So that's kind of the direction we're heading with it.
Right. Obviously, a group like the U of I, when they're working with us on the call to action, if they wanted to host an event, you know, or be able to use the nature center as a site, um, well, we certainly wouldn't hope the answer is, well, you can rent it. You know, obviously, we want to be a part of that, we want to have staff there and, you know. So again, it's sort of an extension of what we can do. Um, it just got to the point where it was so rigid before, unless you could formulaically work through the system, you were out. We want to create on-ramps and say yes, but still do it in a fair and balanced way.
Yep.
So I think, you know, we're just on the cusp of, you know, starting to work in this way. And I think we started to work that way informally, really, a few years ago. We found, hey, we need this, we have to say yes to this, because this is a really good thing. And there's not an easy way to create a formula that makes somebody pay for something that we're gonna benefit or our residents benefit from. Um, certainly, we can evaluate that, and if there's any, you know, concerns, we can address them. But we're very excited about that fresh approach and empowering our staff to, to get out there and make those connections. Because if the answer is, well, we gotta charge you and you can't afford it, we can't do it then. And so finding ways around those, uh, without incurring lots of new costs yourself. Obviously, that's gotta, gotta work in that direction, so we'll, we'll keep you updated on, on that. Uh, let's see, I think Derek and staff mentioned health and wellness, but I was just gonna, uh, mention, we had a terrific kickoff meeting with all of our management staff, and we just have a really savvy team that's gonna work on this. All of our successes, I think, have come from working at those wider staff layers. Because that's how you learn about how their end of the aspect goes, or how, where the mistakes or the assumptions can trip you up. So we had a very good kickoff. Um, I would compare it to the, um, Crystal Lake Family Aquatic Center, you know, we had a very big wide-team approach. So everybody brought their best game, we covered all the bases, eliminated as many problems, found new solutions and creative approaches to designing a facility, that I think paid off. And if we had have just left it, leadership team in charge, obviously, there's opportunity to miss things or, you know, create disconnects. So excited about that and was very well done. Um, just an update from Champaign County first, I've mentioned numerous times our interest in high-speed rail, and we're constantly focused on that. There was a new report that was just put out by the Federal Rail Administration that we discussed in our last meeting, entitled, uh, Midwest Regional Rail Plan, where they basically commit on paper to which lines are gonna get improvements. Well, the next concern is, why are those lines identified the way they are in the certain routes? Because in this particular map, and we saw it on a previous map, the I-57 corridor from Chicago to Champaign-Urbana to Memphis is a dashed line, it's not even on that map. And so the concerns, as you can imagine everywhere from the U of I, saying, we're investing a lot in the DPI in Chicago, trying to get that, that, a lot of that's predicated on quick, easy rail access to, you know, Urbana. Um, and so what we've, you know, we're very concerned about that. While it's not a commitment for high-speed rail, it's improving those lines. So we're reading between the next line, well, if we've invested in improving these lines, why don't we just make those the high-speed rail routes and we're done? That would basically run it through Bloomington Normal, St. Louis and bypasses completely. And we're also able to offer doglegs to Indianapolis to the east, so we think we have a very viable, and St. Louis for that matter, um, via another route. So we're continuing to track that, we're having an action day, we want to make sure all of our state and state legislators are aware of this. So we want to get with Senator Durbin, Duckworth and, uh, Mr. Davis, and make sure that they're aware as well as our local legislators. So we're trying to arrange that at the, um, Illinois Terminal, um, yet this year. And get everybody in the room and share those maps and make sure is everyone good with that, that we're being excluded, um, and what can we do about that? So it's still time to, you know, get things shifted, but there's now been two maps generated that completely bypasses. We thought we raised issues the last time around, and apparently it didn't work. So, and the fact may be, it will go another direction, and we won't have that advantage. But we need to make sure we're fighting and making our voices known and selling our best assets, because we have multiple universities on that line as well. Um, not to say if you took up the major population center of Chicago to St. Louis, you know, we all understand the populations in those, you know, connections, but there are many tangible-
There's just two big nodes as opposed to all the-
Exactly. And so we want to make sure everyone's aware, and then if they still go forward with those approaches, you know, we won't have a lot of say-so. But let's, let's sell our best assets in that occasion. Last thing I wanted to spend a little bit of time on is some interest at Crestview Park. We've had a lot of discussions about what's happening at Crestview Park. Long history there for me personally, one of the first master plans I did way back in nineteen eighty-seven as a student project was at that site. Professor Walt Keith, who was a board member on this board for about ten years, um, led that, you know, initiative. And that was my first experience working in that neighborhood. Since that time, we've kind of rebounded and been working in the Silverwood and kind of kept our eye on that park. And we think it has a lot of potential, um, what I've been talking with our staff about and with our Rotary team and some of the neighborhood groups that are interested, is the idea of kind of creating a peace park where we have a facility in a, a place, a park in Urbana, that's focused on nonviolence. We have a very interesting neighborhood and community around there, there's single-family housing, variety of apartments, student housing, public housing, daycares, commercial buildings and zones, um, and senior housing, um, that's, that's right adjacent to the, the site. So we have no other really intensely diverse park in a location like that, so it sets itself right up. And again, to the south of the park, we've been working the Silverwood neighborhood, you know, there's a lot of critical need there. I think there's a number of area of need in that neighborhood. So we would like to go through a planning process to really flesh that out of, what could that be? Um, how would that look and what would we do there? But the idea is, could we create a very meaningful place that is a place you could go to celebrate or to grieve or to remember or to get some positive focus attention on why people are shooting each other daily in the streets? Um, we don't have anything in Urbana. Um, I know the Heritage Trail effort that started to try to create linkages around the community based on, you know, African-American history is great, but it's all happening in Champaign. Um, my understanding is there'll be later connections in Urbana, but I don't know how many years or what that will look like. So we're trying to look at, what else can we do to create some alternative messages, create place and give the neighbors that live around there a little more hope and attention? Um, not meaning we're not paying attention, but focus on their concerns of neighborhood violence and, and what's going on right, right around the park. So we're trying to build a coalition of interest, I mentioned that People Power, um, Park, the People Parks and Power Grant, that might be one piece, or Nancy suggested there could be some other dollars that might be out there for programming, um, perhaps for development. So we'd like to, um, share that with the board, see if there's general support for that notion, and then we'll continue to work and get information. I, um, presented at urban planning class, um, last week, last Thursday. Um, and the students have been working in that part of, the, the Philo Road area of Urbana. This particular group was focused on the park, and so they invited myself and Barbara Jones, who's our Peace Committee, um, Chair for the Urbana Rotary. And so we both came as part of their presentation, just to talk what we were doing and some of these ideas, and certainly, there's a lot of student interest. Um, they had already done a bunch of social mapping, I think that's something we'd probably want to take a fresh run at. But the idea is, you start to identify who lives there, what are their unique situations and characteristics? What are the, um, actual physical and cultural resources available? Um, or that could be an asset, things like Salt Light, there's other churches in that neighborhood. So you can imagine a, a mapping exercise that starts to identify those resources and then continue to work through a process that would physically define a park in a new way. It's a very underutilized park, I know in talking with, with Derek in operations, the current, you know, third garden scheme, it, it's not exciting, it's, it's, there's no there there, you know, I don't, I've, I don't know in the last five years, ten years, talked to anybody that's visited there or made a comment about that. So again, there could still be a garden component, maybe it becomes more of a peace-based, public art, artful activities, you know, cultural, uh, programming that could happen in that neighborhood that, you know, is still at a neighborhood level, people could easily access, walk over. Um, so I think that's sort of the direction we're recommending, we wanted to make sure the board was comfortable with that, uh, you know, option. Obviously, that would give us a long time between tonight and when a final plan is developed, but certainly creating that opportunity for the community, I think, would be a very good move. And we don't have any other alternatives, so everybody I've shared the idea with thinks it's very exciting and very cutting-edge, and they can't think of other places. So one of the things I recommend we do, I've got a shortlist already, three or four sites, but kind of look at precedents. What else is out in the country around, are there other similar, you know, facilities or parks like this? We know there's other types of memorial parks and survivor parks and, you know, those type of things, but can we catalog those? What are the unique aspects, what design principles can we pull from them and how can we repackage it in a really interesting project at Crestview Park? Aside from that, I don't think there are any other real plans or ideas or, you know, notions of what could happen there. So I would, again, staff would urge, you know, the board to consider this, it's a great way to get Up Deck involved. I think there's numerous neighborhood groups, you know, we could tap in and really build on this. Something that I think the rec staff continues to echo, and I, I keep hearing it is, all that's nice and fun and neat, but we gotta make sure we have regular activities and programming that's happening. Because you can do one thing once a year, a big, you know, excitement, but then what happens the rest of the year? And so that's where these affiliates and other partners come in. Could we put together a calendar of events, so there's something throughout each month? Or many things during the warmer outdoor months? Could we find a relationship with Salt Light where we could gain access to indoor space? Or some of the other businesses or churches, you know, in that corridor? So that we could go from outdoor to indoor and still have places to meet and, and do activities. So it's very grassroots, you know, kind of finding solutions, you know, along the way, if you will. Um, and still fit that neighborhood, keep everybody excited of what's happening at the park. Because probably my prediction is, if we don't go that direction, it'll be how long before we're coming back saying, well, the garden needs to be revitalized, there's not a lot, we just need to get a bunch of money to go in and kind of spruce up. So we're trying to find a more, um, dynamic outcome for that, that park and what it could provide us. So I'll give a little pause there, and if there's any feedback or comments or questions, certainly would entertain them. I've shared it with leadership, I think there's general agreement with that. Probably our big concern, and I'll, I'll state it right now, we have a lot of projects and I'm concerned. We've got Health and Wellness Prairie Play, we're in Blair Park Real Sirius, and then all the other rec programs, all the other capital programs. So finding carve-out time and space is, is probably the hardest thing right now. So what I continue to talk to our partners are, we, we can probably do this, but we gotta do it at a pace we can keep our staff involved at a level that doesn't overload them. Um, and certainly, I don't want to necessarily say, well, maybe the library could do the physical planning. Well, that's not how we want to do it either, we have our job and a role for them, but we certainly need to be the principals. And the feedback I got from our meeting today, they, there needs to be a lead group, like the Park District, that could actually realize these improvements and sort of oversee it and make sure that it goes to good use. You know, if you outsourced it to well-meaning groups, you might end up with something very different. So again, that, that's sort of the proposal and would love to get any feedback. It's a new idea, you, maybe you need to think about it for a while and give it some thought. We could certainly come back, you know, next month under Commissioner Comments or add it to an agenda. So we don't really have anything to share tonight, but certainly future things, you know, getting some feedback, working in the park, doing a survey, talking with the local businesses, um, talking with our other partners that might have other resources along this way to, how do we transform that park? And I think it's been long enough since we've really done a whole lot, other than the playground, which was done, I don't know, seven or eight years ago. We haven't really done a whole lot, I'm not being critical, there's just not a lot to work with there. And this might give us a whole new leg on what I'd call, you know, a different level of programming in a neighborhood park. Um, so I will stop talking now.
Is, is, is there a possibility that we could work with the, with the neighborhood groups in a real, in a real planning session?
Yes, that would be our-
Because I would think the input from, from the neighbors and, what just sort of flashed through my mind here was that maybe we need, um, a nature place south. Uh, because I, m- m- my feeling is that, that area, there aren't a lot of play, a lot of play, play, play places. And I think that that's one of the best things we can do for, for kids, you know, up to, you know, like fourteen, fifteen, is to find a way for them to be able to engage in some activity out of doors.
We agree.
So I, I don't know, that's just, that's just my thought, but I would think that the neighborhood feedback, and then there must be study. So where, where would, you know, I, I go to look to find out what's successful? Because I think of that as a sort of urban area.
Yeah, I agree.
What are successful urban parks?
I totally agree with that, yeah.
What makes a good urban park, how, what does that?
I think those are really good models, because you have a, oh, it's a kind of an interesting mix, but it's a little more urbanized with the retail area there.
Yeah.
The retailer is kind of right downtrodden at this point.
Right. And I think so, how do we revitalize those, you know, park connections? You know, there was a, a time when I think the Y was interested in Urbana, developing a facility, and they were looking in that neighborhood. But my point is, the reason they were looking there is because it's a high-hope neighborhood. It's an area that is underserved, but it has a lot of potential to serve a lot of people. And if you're doing that kind of work, then you're really, you know, doing some good stuff. So they didn't, their effort didn't realize, but maybe ours can. And while our health and wellness facility's not too far from there, um, with, I'd say within an easy walk, you know, those kind of connections and improvements will go a long way.
Oops, sorry, but the, I mean, that could certainly provide our, you know, sort of the outdoor counterpoint-
Right.
To the indoor health, health and wellness, and someplace that a kid could go, you know, when he was able to, or she was able to ride a bike to the park, but not all the way over to, to, to health and wellness, because I'm guessing that there are a lot of kids-
Right.
In that, in that neighborhood.
There are.
Yeah, I mean, I remember seeing a kid, just, he was just riding his bike, e- e- either he was waiting for somebody or he just didn't have anything else to do, which was my, my thought, and he's just kind of riding his bike around that parking lot, riding his bike around that parking lot. And I thought, this, you know, there should be something here that this, that this kid could do, and there isn't much.
Right, we agree, and there's not a lot of good alternatives.
Yeah.
Also heard a few notes, some of the residents go to Larson Park, and so we'd like to kind of look at that park as well, like, what does that offer?
Mm-hmm.
What does this opportunity offer, they're very close, and then what does the neighborhood?
And there's, there's also Lomond Park, which-
I, I agree.
You know, I mean, it, it, it's divided by, uh, Philo Road, which is a fairly high-traffic, but at the same time, distance-wise, is there some way to do things that, that can work with two or three of those parks?
I agree.
And somehow-
Yeah.
Uh, stay connected, because- Uh, stay connected because, yeah, there, there are plenty of stuff going on, uh, to the east of Philo Road.
Right. Right. We agree with that. And I think, you know, we have other partners like the library and the Forest Preserve. They're looking for opportunities to connect, you know, to their people too, that pay taxes and support their services. But they don't have good outlets, you know, to, so that's where we have an advantage, because we do have the flexible outdoor space. We know how to manage that. So there could be, again, a whole list of groups coming in. It may not be us, but maybe it's the library's month. And they're going to do a story walker or some other activity. The Forest Preserve is starting to realize, or at least we're hearing from leadership, they serve urban people too, but they don't have a lot of inroads to actually, you know, you have to go out to a preserve. So how do we create opportunities for them to deliver service that benefits our residents?
Right.
And we do a partnership approach. So I think those are really exciting ideas, you know, that could be explored. They'll all take resource and time and effort, but I think the benefit could be, you know, untold. If we started to impact some lives and create new opportunities and new connections.
Well, I think too that we want to look at, you know, just, just look over the summer, sort of daily, every other daily use. So, you know, you, you can go to that park and there's something you can do, whether the library is going to be doing a program in the afternoon.
Right.
Or, you know, the Forest Preserve District is bringing snakes on Thursday.
Right.
So you know, they won't be there.
Right.
Um, um, well, but, you know, I can, I can ride my bike over there and there's, there's something to do. And it's not the same old play structure to climb and swing on, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, and I think that's an extraordinary challenge for just a relatively small piece of ground.
Right.
But I mean, Michael's idea, maybe, you know, maybe we can.
Right.
Kind of link, link them in some way or have.
Absolutely.
You know, sort of a graduated, so it's an age, so we've got the ages separated a little bit more so that there's, you know, kids could, might be more likely to go to Loman.
Right.
And, I mean, that's, that's an extraordinarily unutilized space.
Right. And with Colorado, the, at least the portion of the trail built, there's, there's easy, you know, easier connection. Maybe one of our challenges, how do we create a wayfinding or a safe routes, you know, approach to getting people easily to those parks? Or take a radius approach. How, how, what all can you do in a five-minute or five-minute walk? So that's one of the things I was suggesting our Rotary and staff teams do is let's go visit the park, analyze it.
Yep.
Kind of surveil the neighborhood, start talking to people.
Yep.
You know, Sam Smith that is with Cranert in their outreach group, you know, his idea, because he was in the class also, because they're working with Cranert on this. You know, his ideas are always grand, but it, I think you'll get the idea of if we could find somebody to buy one of the apartments, we move into the apartments. We start doing a year-long charrette with the neighborhood, get to know people, think of what kind of connections. Well, that's, that's probably on that farther edge of.
Yeah.
But, but I think we all see his point. It's getting to know people, making those connections. And then you'll know what the, the best moves are, and you sort of really have a community-based input model there. And so probably won't be able to do that, or the Park District probably won't be able to do that, but what else can we do? And so I think this idea of engagement and investment and reinvestment is, is really exciting and, and probably coming to time. So again, if you have thoughts, comments, we'd love to hear it. Um.
Oh yeah, put me on that committee. Yeah, I like, I like the idea. I think that that's, there's a lot, I mean, you could have an art part, you could have a.
Right.
Activity, you know, more activity part. You could have a nature part, you could.
And I just thought of it now too, but one goal could, how do we get maybe residents there to learn and know about other resources that we have and get them to other places? If you just didn't know what's at, you know, the Phillips REC Center, why would you go there? And so if we found compelling ways to, you know, offer or get people connected, might be a good idea.
And those parks are really close too. The park's really close to my house as well.
Okay.
I'm very interested in that. And then I was wondering if you, you said, you mentioned that you were like looking at example, other examples of like peace parks?
Yes, and survivor parks and, you know, not, when I say memorial parks, not, you know, like the nine eleven.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, you can look at those as bigger precedents, but you know, what are, what's at the neighborhood or community park level that we could look and, and find? So I've got a shortlist. If you think of other places, just send me a note and let me know. So I think, again, everybody we've shared the idea with is very interested. It, it compels people to want to be involved. Um, and there's nowhere else like that in the area. So I've shared it with the Champaign County Coalition. Everybody was very interested. Shared it with Dr. Ward. Today when we talked, she thought it was a very novel idea. You know, to what level the university would be involved, I'm not sure, but certainly if we came up with ideas, um, we're working with groups in the trauma recovery. You know, resilience group, you know, maybe there's opportunities for us to focus there, you know, in some of their work and how we can extend that. So that's, that's what I had in my report. Can answer any questions. I'm certain we'll revisit this, um, once we get moving. Again, I'm sensing there's general interest in at least continuing the idea.
Ooh, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
That's all I had. Michael?
Okay, that's all?
Tried to talk fast.
Turn over your folder, see if there's anything on the backside.
I, yep, I think that's it.
That, well, that was good.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the President's Report, I don't have anything specific to bring up other than, uh, uh, coming meetings.
Not too bad.
Uh, Tim has already mentioned the, uh, the UPDEC meeting with the Community Coalition updates on the sixteenth of November. Uh, we have our special CUSR joint board meeting, which is onsite at the new CUSR location. So, and that's at five thirty on December second, and it takes a while to get out there.
Well, and m- m- my phone told me that it was the new Leonard Center, so I kind of drove around until I saw, oh, he shines license plate. And I thought, okay, this must be it. So it's that, it's that, it's the smaller, it's the smaller building.
The original one?
The original.
Yes, right, right.
What is the address? Does anyone know?
That won't help you. I think it's twenty twelve. Um, is it something?
We can send it out again.
Yeah.
If that's helpful to you.
It would, it might help to drive by it in the daytime. That's the trouble, that it's dark.
But what, what's the old facility? I don't even remember.
It's a, it's a small one. It's not their great big new Leonard Center.
It's the old Leonard Center.
It's the, it's the old Leonard Center, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think, it's almost like the two buildings have the same number of street addresses. I mean, it's, it was very odd, because I put in what you sent and it's, it, I mean, it's trying to get me to go into the parking lot.
Okay.
In the new building. So it's not, um, it's not straightforward for getting.
That is the proper parking lot to park there? That is, so that would maybe be correct?
But it was across, there's.
It says twenty two, twelve, St. Emin Drive, and my map is showing it on the north side.
On the north side? Okay, because, yeah, all right, so maybe it's.
And I think their parking, official parking lot is on the south side that's joined with the pool and the new Leonard.
Right, right.
The other parking that's right next to their building is actually Jefferson Schools Parking.
Yeah.
It's called CUSR Center.
Yeah, CUSR Center. I think after five, if there's no school events, you can park in the school lot.
Right, right.
Right there. But it's very easy and there's a very safe crosswalk, you know, just across Crescent Drive, right there.
Yep, yep, yeah. It was the building that I was having trouble with, but.
Yep.
I did get there.
And then, uh, December seventh is our study session, uh, planned topics for the mission and vision, uh, review. And, uh, priority projects report for the Parks Foundation. And then on the fourteenth of December, we have a regular meeting. And so we have goals review, action to accept the annual meeting calendar, action to abate property taxes. It's a, just a annual housekeeping action we have to take. Review and accept the priority projects report to the foundation that we will have looked at at the study session. And, uh, an important one, closing on the annual bond sale. And, uh, I see also on here is approve updates to the safety manual, so it's.
If there are any.
Pardon?
If there are any.
If there are any, okay. So it isn't that there are specific known ones coming down the pike. Okay. And that's all I had to bring up in that regard. Moving on to liaison reports, the finance study group actually has not met since we last reported on that. We're meeting this coming Friday. Uh, via Zoom, I hope, because I'm going to be a long way away. Uh, the policy study groups, are there anything to bring up there?
Uh, we have a meeting next week on Tuesday.
Okay. And the Parks Foundation representatives, so you had a meeting yesterday, right?
Yes, I was, uh, at a family funeral, so, uh, Tim sat in for me.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that. And was there anything that, uh, the board should know about the foundation meeting?
I mean, all of it's important, um, but certainly I was able to report on the topics Roger asked me to cover.
Yeah.
Um, I can't think of any, you know, new in, information.
And, uh, lastly, the UPDEC planning study group, uh, and that's not been, even not met, have you?
Nope.
Okay. Alrighty.
Didn't they elect, didn't they elect a new board? Or is that just a nominating committee for the foundation? Or maybe that was, maybe I'm a meeting behind.
You are correct. They did get new officers.
Yep.
Um, but it was more of a successional approach, who's must leave and then who's remaining that would be willing to serve. So Megan Pusey will be our new president.
Right. Ellen's vice president.
Ellen will be vice president, and Mary Ellen, I'm sorry, Mary Ann Downey will be this, um, secretary.
And Jim Condon is staying on his treasure.
Still has treasure, correct. Thank you for that. It was done so low-key.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't seem to be a big, you know, action item. Right.
Yeah.
It was really done well in advance.
Yes.
It was no surprise.
Yeah, no surprise.
The vice president is?
Ellen Kursenoff.
Okay.
Yes.
Got you. All right, ready to move on to old business, uh, and an important action to approve the tax levy ordinance for twenty twenty-one. All right, the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero eight, so.
I don't have much really to add, other than I kind of went through the basics of the levy last month, where I kind of detailed out, uh, all the different steps that we usually go through. And this is really just the legal document that has to get filed with the county at this point. So the board selected various option, were presented with various options. You selected one. I took that information, um, and put it into the black box so that we could have the public hearing and create the ordinance. So at this point, um, this information goes to the county clerk's office. And we basically don't hear anything else until the levy gets finalized in April at that point, other than that they write to confirm that they received our numbers. Um, so unless you have specific questions, you know, I think everything has gone smoothly in the normal annual process so far.
Okay, so if I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh eight, are we ready for that?
Yep.
Okay, and ordinance providing for the levying, assessment and collection of taxes for the physical, the physical year. How about the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three of the Urbana Park District?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Uh, hearing none, we should take a roll call vote on this. We'll start with Roger.
Aye.
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 Okay, and we have passed our tax levy for the coming year. Which is important in that we really got to do it, or else.
Yep.
So, um, there was no old business removed from the consent agenda, so we are on to new business. First item, action to approve the twenty twenty-two capital improvement budget and revisions to the twenty nineteen A and twenty twenty-one capital improvement budget.
Planning staff's ready to roll.
Yep, I can, uh, start with the revisions. So I'll kind of walk through, uh, two thousand and nineteen A and then twenty-one, uh, first. Uh, so looking at two thousand and nineteen A, uh, capital budget, I think Katie and I, uh, adjusted every single line almost within this.
Pretty much.
Uh, so starting with the revenue section, the, uh, bond revenue was, um, revised to the actual. And then we had new revenues that are now identified, uh, for the health and wellness facility. And so that would be the, uh, donations from, uh, the foundation, the park grant, and then transfer from general fund. Then move into expenditures, uh, revised to the actual expense of cost of issue, uh, which was quite a bit lower.
Ooh, yay, hooray.
Well, that's a little misleading, because the reason that the, the bond monies went down and the cost of issue went down was because when we received that bond money, the portion that was, um, applicable to the repayment of the old bonds went into the bond fund instead. And so the cost of issuance wound up getting split between the bond fund and the capital improvements fund. So the new money came to capital improvements fund, and the cost of issuance for the new money, the allocation of that was this eighty-nine. The rest was related to paying off the remaining principal of the two old bonds that we refunded on. And that went through the bond fund. So there was some finagling around of, but this, it's all correct now. So we didn't actually pay less. We really did pay that hundred and fourteen thousand. It's just some of it got paid from the bond fund instead.
On the different pots.
Yes, um, and so that same, um, amount of money actually, basically this amount that went down from five million nine thirty-four to five million nine ten. That's the same amount decreased, because that also got moved over.
Mm-hmm.
If that makes sense. So it's just trying to get it all kind of what we thought was going to happen, and then what really happened. And kind of getting that all fleshed back out now that more things are certain.
So then what we, uh, started to do is really separate out known project costs, um, based on, now this budget's really split into Crystal Lake, uh, improvements or health and wellness initiatives. So in Crystal Lake improvements, we've separated by two primary project areas, one being the rehab, uh, project construction. And the other one being, um, the road resurfacing, uh, which is then further, uh, separated into design work that we are under contract with currently. And the money that's now set aside within this, uh, specific, um, budget for, um, the construction for the mill and resurface of that road. And then in health and wellness, we had known costs that we have now identified, um, from park application, uh, fee, the facility design, uh, contract, which is now executed. Uh, traffic study, archaeology, and then we have the offsetting expenses for those new revenue lines that, um, I discussed just a minute ago.
Is that a sort of standard amount for archaeology? Are you, or are you anticipating finding a mastodon or something?
So they, they completed that review and we were, we got the all clear.
Okay, but is that, is that?
They did like a ground penetrating radar, and they had like, um, I can't remember how many holes they had to dig. And then, uh, review the material that they dug from that. And then based on those findings, we're doing radar sensing technology on part of, uh, the project site, but it, we, we're fine.
But, but it's, but it's a customary amount. I mean, it's not, it's not a whole lot more than you expected. It's.
No, I mean, I, I think it's pretty affordable, but.
Oh, yeah, I was just curious.
We haven't really had to, you know, go down that road that frequently, but, you know, we work with the university on that, and so I think we get some savings on that as well.
Good.
Uh, so I can go to two thousand and twenty-one, uh, starting in the revenue section that has, uh, tributes and donations, uh, adjusted. And also identified two donations received for the Ambuch Shade Structures and the purchase of a sculpture. And then in the expenditure section, we had revised lower cost of issue.
That really was lower. That one really was. So that was good.
And then our ADA line is now, um, dedicated to two, uh, ongoing projects. That, uh, was the original tent for the ADA for this year, uh, one being the Blair Park Ozlight Improvement. And then the other, uh, being the Transition Plan, uh, ADA Audit. And then in equipment, we've identified some known expenses for garbage truck, uh, mower and a facility, uh, Gator utility vehicle. And then an upcoming three-quarter ton, uh, bid that we'll have out in the next couple of months. And then our contingency there at the bottom increased, uh, by the two hundred dollars that we had, uh, received as savings from the cost of issue.
Woo-hoo.
So then on the two thousand and twenty-two capital, uh, budget, I went through this, um, line by line, uh, last month. So I won't go, uh, again, because we presented tonight unchanged from that. But I will note that, um, you know, a lot of our funding from this capital year is being, uh, used to accumulate funds for the eventual replacement of Prairie Play. Uh, so we had twenty thousand dollars, uh, in twenty twenty-one. We have, I think it's about three hundred and forty thousand dollars in then, in this year. And then in next capital year, we'll have another, uh, approximately three hundred thousand, uh, dollars that we'll use as part of the overall project for the replacement in, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. And then just kind of one of the other big expenditure lines you'll see is the vehicles and equipment. And so that includes a half-ton truck, a dump truck, a brush chipper, a trailer, and another Gator utility, uh, vehicle. But like I said, I did go kind of review it, uh, last month. We don't have any changes this month. We're, we're all good with it still. But I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any detail. But I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any detail that you would like me to.
Ready for motion?
The chair would certainly entertain such.
Ooh, how, how well will you entertain? That's what I want to know. So I move that we approve the 2022 capital improvement budget and the revisions of the 2019A and the 2021 capital improvement budgets.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or any questions on the point? Hearing none, roll call vote, starting at the left with Cedric.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. Takes us to review the annual board actions calendar. This is not something we necessarily need to take action on, but
It's for your information, but just as you know, we use this to sort of track our annual major activities, make sure we have a balanced calendar. We don't forget critical steps in our process. Certainly we can add or detract anything that the board would ask.
Yeah, I might just comment too, like this is where Kelsey, this is the document that Kelsey actually uses to populate the upcoming actions for the President's Report. And so that's why it says like approve safety manual. Just, we have it calendared as something that every December we make sure we reviewed if we need to, but it's, it's all kind of like optional slash influx just based on the needs. It's just kind of make sure that we don't ever drop anything critical.
But, yeah, it's important that all the annual things that have to take place
Exactly. So we don't find ourselves in a surprise situation.
Yeah, but they don't necessarily have to be in these months or
If we get off a little, it's, it's okay, but it helps us balance the workload too. If things could shift to a month that's less, then we could certainly do that if, you know, if it wasn't restricted by a schedule.
And we haven't had a problem with the schedule as it's been. I mean, I don't think
Right. They, I mean, they, the only thing I, we had to jigger a little and I don't know if we've fully accounted for it here is, is when the UPDAC members are actually appointed. That's on here as of June.
Yeah.
But I think it's good actually to, at least aspirationally, have that on here this early.
Yes. Oh yeah, absolutely.
Because I feel we always seems like we're playing catch-up. And, and having the, having the reminder here, I think is a good thing.
Agreed.
So any, any comments or questions on the annual actions? Seeing none, and we also had no new business removed from the consent agenda. We're on to comments from commissioners.
I don't want to surprise anybody that have a couple of comments. I won't be able to be at the meetings in Chicago. I like the idea of a joint meeting with the school board. I think it sounds like it's pretty imperative that we do that. And then I had a question about Matt during attending any of the legal symposium meetings. Does he do that? How does he?
I think he did.
I think he did this year.
He did, okay.
It was virtual, so we weren't all together like we usually are, but he had us register him, so.
Oh, good. That's great.
Yep.
Yeah, because I was thinking about Betsy going up there and, and I also thought that it was really important. And he works for, not just us, he works for the Forest Preserve District too, so it's, I mean, it's kind of a double fit. Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, he had us register him, but his firm was reimbursing us. He just worked with us to get registered and stuff because we had an easy way to do it, so.
Good.
We're, we're happy to facilitate that because we learned so much there, so.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
He heard, hears the same thing and it helps facilitate conversations, so.
Yeah, we all really benefit from that. Any number of things we're ready to go back and start working on to get, get into shape. It's also nice to know if you're doing things right.
Sometimes we leave terrified and then other times, and then other times we're like, okay, we're good this year.
I do, now that we're in that discussion, I just want to add one of the topics. I think the first discussion was on FOIA and Open Meetings Act. Super important. They always usually have a session of something because there's law and law cases. But I think, believe it or not, they kind of go through, you know, this happened in a public setting. But one of the groups, I believe, kind of the rule was in public comment, you could say, you couldn't say anything negative about that.
That was their rule.
I mean, so when you hear things like that, it, it kind of reinforces how far away many other groups are and what they're doing or how, how bad, you know, some of that is being handled. So, because you, you, why are we having this topic again? Or I thought we knew all this.
Yeah, who was so silly as to do, think that that was acceptable?
I probably wouldn't say the name.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, the question is who would?
Right, and you think, well, that doesn't make any sense, but people don't know. And so that training and that reminder, and that's why we do those things and
So nothing that we have to be, no FOIA stuff that we need to worry about? It didn't look like it.
No, not anything. You know, everything's kind of always mentally checking. Are we, yeah, we're good there and, you know.
I'm curious if there was any discussion of, I mean, Urbana is meeting remotely for the city council. Did that yesterday and our advice from Matt has been, well, it's no longer a declared emergency, you can't do that.
Right.
Is, was that reinforced in the legislative?
I don't believe they talked that. I, I expected that too.
And that legal
You know, etiquette in far as commissioners, whether they mute somebody or not mute.
Oh yeah, we did discuss that too.
Because they were muting them after their public comment, like right when their time was up or, I don't know, it was just kind of like
And I think what they're saying is, other than your minute rules, let people say what they're, and then it, I think there was some discussion of profanity or
Oh yeah, that's right.
Saying inappropriate things, but, you know, they were saying, kind of how I heard it is, you know, yeah, unless they're really aggressive and abusive, but toughen up, you know, people say things and, you know.
It's not anything a third grader wouldn't hear on the playground, am I?
I'd rather hear it than try to shut somebody down and read about it in the paper.
Or be on the receiving end of something even worse.
Well, and I think what we heard about remote meetings was Jason Anselman basically said that it's, it's probably legally defensible to meet remotely and many local governments are, according to the current, like Illinois executive orders and all of that. But Matt is saying that the issue is it'd be difficult to justify when all of our programming is, has returned in person. So it's hard to say, well, but our board meetings can't because of the emergency when we're clearly doing a lot of other in-person activities. So it's just a gray area that, you know, we, I don't know, we just don't want to
And the city council wouldn't be in that situation
Correct.
because they don't have any public programs.
Right. So I thought, we thought about that.
The city certainly does.
Well, the city does.
So
They're not necessarily gathering people.
But not in the, not in the same way. And I think in fact, they have still a lot of their employees working remotely, so.
Right.
We're happy to explore remote meetings further if you'd like us to.
I mean, it's a little hard for the, the operations folks to be working remotely, but, but they are out of the building.
I think what we internally at staff level said, well, you know, we still have winter to go. So if things change, you know, we could certainly adjust ourselves depending on the actual situation. So we don't know that, but I've seen different models predicting at least three different approaches, but until it happens, so.
Has there been a determination on a holiday staff party?
I'm sure we'll do something. We had our staff retreat. It was modified, but we did have a gathering and a get-together. So there would likely be some sort of effort. Don't know the details yet.
I haven't gotten a save the date from the committee yet, but I know we normally would invite a commissioner to come and help pass out gifts and so forth. So I don't, I haven't heard anything yet, but I'll be sure to, I think I know which staff member of my team's on the committee, so I'll follow up with them and make sure that they know that they need to like reach out and invite and make sure that either you, Michael, or Nancy, or whoever is available can come and, and, well, of course, you're all invited.
Yes.
But we usually try to make sure that one of you can surely be there if you, if you're able, so.
I think we'd like to, it's just, you know, probably taking the pulse of the group and comfort level and see.
Well, yeah, we're still, we're still living in strange times.
Right.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing no indication of that, I believe we have exhausted our agenda and I will declare us adjourned then.